And I'm bringing this to you now because at least by the December board meeting, we would need to make a change to that policy because CCTL and VPAC teachers administer their final exams in December, and we want to make sure that we give them opportunity to make those changes to their grade books. I know we discussed this at length at our committee of the whole meeting, but just need some consensus and guidance from you on what you would support as a board.
So you prefer that we wait till next month to actually take the vote?
If you can vote tonight, or if you would like to wait for a month, we could hold that for a month, as long as we had some consensus on kind of where we were going, so that we could let teachers begin making some of those changes.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see the point of waiting. I'll go ahead and move that we accept the recommendation of the teachers, move it to 20 percent.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. As point for discussion, we did, as Dr. Taylor says, spend quite a bit of time in our meeting earlier tonight discussing this, so I don't feel like this is a quick decision. We've heard and had quite a bit of discussion about the topic. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Can I make one point of clarification? And that is assuming that the board, the state board passes this. If the state board does not pass this change, then the end of course, final exams would still count 25 percent. But it's assuming we get that flexibility.
I would amend my motion to that clarification.
No other discussion then? We'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries then, six to one.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item C, the impact device fee. Mr. Patrick Abely.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board. I'm also going to ask Dr. Blatner to join me as well. He does have previous experience with the device use fee at CCTL. The device use fee is a process that several school districts across the state are utilizing to protect investments with technology. Through the IMPACT grant, we'll be investing just over five and a half million dollars in technology devices in our middle schools and high schools. What best practices have found in the last several years is to self-insure the devices is a much better practice for school districts to undertake. We'll be purchasing approximately 10,000 devices. The average cost of an insurance package on the device could range anywhere from 50 to $100. So annually, that could be a half million to a million dollars just tied up in insurance. And what districts have found that have utilized a device fee is to self-insure themselves against possible damages, but also to have a fund balance that they can use in case of upgrades or repairs, or any other additional items that may be needed for the devices. Things will wear out over time. Currently, within the grant, we have approximately $22,500 per year for device upgrades and repairs. That's averaging $2.50 per device. We know we can't sustain devices at that rate. The other keynote for districts that have implemented, that I've talked to, that have implemented a device fee is with users paying a small percentage annually for a device fee, there's a little bit of ownership and a little bit of commitment to protect that investment for the school district. So I do think that's an advantage as well. But what I'd like to do is ask Dr. Blatner to kind of step in and explain a little bit more about the device fee and what that's utilized for.
Thank you. When we used the device fee at CCTL, it was for all those reasons. And it was actually recommended by every manufacturer that you go this route rather than an insurance company, because a lot of times, insurance company, they're making these fees, you start making claims, and the same thing happens with our car insurance and everything like that. Your rates go up, and then they might drop you, and that money goes away. So it's felt that a better business model was to have it and keep it in-house and be able to do that. What we did is we, one reason we're saying usage fee, I started off saying insurance when we started, and it brought a lot of different ideas of what insurance covers. And so we were very clear when we went into the parent meetings and saying, this covers accidental breakage, it's things that may happen through wear and tear, things like that, things that happen through neglect, like those who decide to do nail polish remover over their device, and it falls on it, those type of things. What happens is that $50 that they spent goes into the cost of that repair, and then they'd be responsible for the remainder of that. But if it was, say, in a classroom, no, it's on the desk, a student turns around, their book back and hits it, it falls on the ground, there is no one at fault there. This is something that that happened. That's one that we would take in and say, okay, we will use that fund to repair the entire cost of that. And so that was administered through myself as the administrator, and when our committee discussed this, it would be the school principal would make a recommendation of what would happen with that. So that's kind of how it was used. And I did not have, as I shared in the committee of the whole, did not have any real pushback from the parents, and they understood what it was for, and we made it clear that this was for. Then biggest question came over ones if it gets stolen. And what we said there is that's why it's not insurance. If it's stolen, and it's in your car, or things like that, you have insurance usually that'll cover things like that. But we worked with those students, because you have a board policy in place protecting those students who can't afford. And that was used in administering this fee, and how we actually made, how we looked at when there were damages that were taken place. I had most of the issues, not issues, most of the times when I said, this fee's out there, if you can't afford or need something, come talk with me. In the three years I was there doing it, only one family had an issue with it, and no problem with that. And most of the others wanted just a payment plan. They said, I want to be part of this. I want to be part of what you're doing here, and I just need whatever it is. And I told them to set the rate, because it really isn't about that money. It's about the kids having what they need, and having us be able to sustain a model for them. So that's kind of how we administered it at CCTL, and it was very successful, and still continuing that time for four years now, without any problems at this point.
The recommendation before you is CCTL utilized $50. We felt in our discussions with cabinet locally, that $50 for the IMPACT project should mirror those two programs, one already being established in the district. The recommendation for $20 for the 2013-14 school year is based upon implementation in February with devices with students. Obviously, if devices are delayed, or it takes longer to implement, then we would want to prorate that even more for this school year. And then next school year, start out again back at the $50 established limit. I think at the end of the 2014-15 school year, as I described in the committee of the whole, would be, I think, an appropriate time to look to see how that fund has been set up, how many individuals have been utilizing or asking for assistance, what the funds have been actually used for, and will allow us then to set that fee waiver, or make modifications or recommendations to that. So that would give us approximately 16 months, 17 months, having some sort of fee waiver in place for the general population. What I have is the last paragraph, I think, is important. Dr. Blatner mentioned procedures and having individuals that may request a waiver. Currently, with local policy, there is no automatic exemption, but we do feel it's viable to work with education foundations, or other partners, or individuals to set up a fund that would be able to help for costs for individuals seeking fee waivers, and then locally be enabled to provide that for individuals that may need additional help or assistance, because certainly, we do not want to put any barriers in place. But from a couple districts I've talked to previously, as Dr. Blatner said, you know, there hasn't been a large-scale number of individuals that seek fee waivers, but it doesn't mean the need's not there. So I think we need to have the process, procedures, and the funding available, should those individuals need to seek that out. Especially, there could be cases with multiple siblings in a school, and so that may present a hardship as well, if you have three or four students that'll be bringing home or having devices. Certainly, we know that can present a hardship as well. Payment plans are certainly an option, you know, we'll work with individuals. But I think the main feedback from me, the reason this item's before you tonight, is one, to discuss the topic, but two, to get the communication out. I've had folks ask me if this was going to be, they know about the process at CCTL, if this was going to be implemented, they just wanted to know, you know, as soon as possible. And so this is a process to communicate that information as well. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Patrick, can you show the second page of your memo?
Absolutely. If we can go to the second page, there was, we actually went to survey to find information out about individuals that may be having fees or fee waivers in place. And what we found was, there was a statewide survey that went out through the Dare County Schools. So this was information that we captured based on responses to their survey. And several of the districts, you can see, that are currently charging device fee, use fees, or accidental fees. It's called, as Dr. Blatner said, maybe called different things in different districts, but it certainly has the same intent. Most of those range anywhere from 25 to $50. $50 does seem to be the one that, you know, seems to show up the most. There are certainly a local decision, there is not a requirement to have this in place, but as I said earlier, felt like, and these districts felt like, that was a good process. Seeing how this trend is really just, it's a new trend. This was not something you would find five or six years ago, I think, in school districts. I think this is a recent process districts have put in place. So I do think it's important to look to what others are doing, but also to continually review that, to make sure a year or two from now, that's the best process we need to have in place.
Is the Roxborough Community School, is that public or private?
That I do not know, sir.
This, sir, I do not know, but this survey was done through listserv of all the tech directors, includes charter, private, and public schools, and these are those who responded back through that.
There actually could be others, we just may not have captured that on the listserv with the emails coming back to us, or through the email sent out.
The question, I think, that board members are going to get, and this just came to me, probably should have asked it earlier, but the general public's going to say, you just got $20 million, and now you're asking for $50 from each person. I understand the fee, but that's the question that we're going to be asked. How would you answer that? And I think you did answer it pretty much already, that it's a buy-in, and it shows that you're going to be responsible for the device. But can you touch on that for us?
I can, and I may go a little bit broader than that as well, because I've had this question come up about, you know, having $20 million in, being able to accomplish all you need to accomplish. I don't ever believe the $20 million was an end-all and be-all. It was seed money, it was an investment. And my response would be, that money is to invest, to get those devices here, to get the right technology we need, but it certainly is not envisioned that it would be everything we would need to sustain and utilize it. I also think there's an added benefit to the new technology, or having technology that's not only available in the hands of students during the school day. We envision students having the ability to take these devices home, so we're extending and broadening the learning opportunities and resources available to students 24/7 at that point in time. So I do think what we're looking at is a paradigm shift where we're in partnerships with our parents and with our communities, and I think this is an example of a partnership.
Thank you.
Another question then. I don't know which way it's going to go. We're going to purchase the devices, or we're going to lease the devices. Say we lease the devices for a certain period of time, which at that period of time would mean that we would replace them. And there has to be some type of warranty on that device that would cover something. I'm just wondering if this is in addition to that, is necessary? And like Mr. Schumaker says, we're going to get that question. And how much, how much open area is there between the warranty that's on the device and a fee that we would have to charge?
Yeah, the warranties will only cover defects from the manufacturer. So like cracked screen, there's not a manufacturer that'll say that their screen will crack automatically. And so I've found, even my experience administering it with CCTL, if it's a cracked screen, it's your fault. They just say that blankly. So, and also, if it is leased, they're going to expect these back in order that they could actually continue to use them, or in what's agreed upon in the lease. So if there is any damage at that point in time, we'd be charged for that damage, if there's keyboard keys missing and things like that. That's more of the damage you'll see, and this covers, but warranty repairs and things like that are typically, would not be part of this fee, because it'd normally be taken care of anyway. Does that answer your question?
It's close.
Close?
And typically, the cost, if you were to include an accidental damage insurance fee with the computer manufacturers, from a retail standpoint, those could run you, purchase of a laptop, $200 to $300 in additional cost per device. So typically, even accidental damage policies and manufacturers have offered separately from their warranties.
And this may be because I just don't know, would anyone's homeowner's insurance cover breakage? Would you have homeowner's insurance for your personal belongings?
I would not, depend on the homeowner's insurance, but I also think the most carry about a $5,000 deductible, usually with homeowner's insurance and things like that. So I would be, I bet you'd fall within deductible ranges for the family if that was the case.
Just so I understand clearly, if the device is lost or stolen, and there's no recourse for filing any kind of insurance claim, the student still be responsible, minus the $50 that they already paid? What happens if they don't pay? Just like we have now with textbooks that aren't paid for? Okay.
Absolutely. Follow the same local policies for damages, the fees, et cetera. Now, one kind of best practice, or one thing I have seen other school districts do, if they have multiple damages, you know, cracked screens over again, you know, they may, you know, work with the parent, and maybe the device not going home, or, you know, putting other procedures in place. But for damages, it's no different than your other local policies.
Other comments or questions? Again, the parents are asking for the direction from, I guess, the district as to what to expect. So they would like to have a vote on this.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we impose a $50 device usage fee.
Have a motion, is there a second? For the 2014-15 year, and then $20 prorated for this year.
Yeah, as presented, as Patrick presented, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Schumaker. I didn't mention about the prorating.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor? Excuse me, did you have another?
I just wanted to make sure. We will provide additional information and clarification to parents throughout the process of exactly what the fees cover and do not cover. And I just wanted to clarify that we will include documentation and information to parents on that. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that clarification. Any other discussion? If not all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have item E, the memorandum of agreement between Troutman Volunteer Fire Department and Iredal State's Full Schools. Brady, Johnson?
Dr. Cash, members of the board, tonight, we're presenting to you an amended memorandum of agreement with the Troutman Fire Department and the Iredal State's Full Schools. We first looked at this last month at your committee of the whole. You folks had a couple suggestions and ideas that we sent back to the attorneys. We did get feedback from both attorneys last week, and so tonight, we are presenting the new edited version of this memorandum of agreement. The only substantial change that has been made is that the fire department did recommend that we insert a clause that would say that sometime in the future, if some type of disagreement arose between the two governing boards, that we would use a mediator that would be furnished by the superior courts to resolve any disputes that might arise. So tonight, we present this for your consideration, and hope that you'll approve it.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of the Troutman Fire Department, and I'll just score on record, Kelly will make sure she notes it, I think it's a great idea we do this, but I think because I'm a member of the fire department, I will accuse myself of voting on this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway? Any other comments, questions?
I'll entertain a motion that we approve the memorandum of agreement as written.
I'll make that note.
Second. He made the motion?
I think he got it in a little quicker, but my ears.
That's okay. First, second.
All right, well, for clarification, I guess, motion from Mr. Rogers? Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Did you get that, Kelly?
Kelly, Kelly.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, next, we'll move on then to the Rural Economic Development Loan Grant Funding Request. Dr. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. As part of the project that we have talked with you previously at West Iredal High School, the funding for that project was through the Rural Economic Loan Grant Fund through the USDA. We're working with the county on these funds. One of the pieces of the application process will be going to the LGC. The LGC requires that bids be in place, or that there's some guarantees that this project will be completed. What we're requesting as part of that packet, or that application process, is a resolution from the board that any funding above the 1.3 million red-led grant would be picked up by the school system to complete the project. We have preliminary cost estimates, and we feel like that we're well within our budget. We were planning to budget around $500,000 to $600,000 on this project. We think that we will be well under that amount, but until we get the bids, we will not know exactly. So this resolution would go to the LGC as part of the application process.
If this, for some odd reason, your bids, we approved this action, and your bids came in way crazy above, is there still time to put on our brakes and regroup?
Sure. At any point in time, you could pull the project, which we would lose the funding, of course, but we will know that well in advance of starting the project. We'll have to have the bids in place, and have to have the money in place before we can start the project. So if the bids, for some unknown reason, came back $3 million, and we have nowhere close to that, then we would just have to pull the project and pull the application.
Yes, I'm just, it's kind of a disclaimer being, I'm looking for a safety net, being that in these times, right now, we're operating, we're spending fund balance to operate the school system.
Exactly. And at any point, the board could pull the plug on any project.
Good, okay.
The county commission could also do that. Basically, what we're telling the LGC is in good faith that we will complete this project as advertised. So if the board could vote on that resolution, approving.
Any other comments or questions? No, we'll entertain a motion then to approve the Rural Economic Development Loan Grant Project as recommended.
Second. Okay. I'll give Kelly a first.
Motion, Mr. Kelly, second, Mr. Rader. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. The next resolution and request is related to our enhanced permitting that we will be doing internally. Our facilities and planning division, we have quite a few licensed personnel. We're going to be changing some processes, and in that, that process change and protocol changes, we're going to be doing more permitting. As part of that permitting, we would request from the county commission a waiver of fees, not a waiver of the permits, but just a waiver of the fees, because the fees basically all come from the same funds. So the county funds our facilities and planning division and maintenance department, they also fund the inspections and planning department. So it's very much like moving money from one pocket to the other. So we would ask the county for those projects that we permit internally to waive the permit fees and zoning fees. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt a resolution on zoning and planning fees, ask for the waiver for the board of commissioners.
I'll second that.
Motion, second by Ms. Bond. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on then to some policy reviews. These are first readings. I think with the exception of one that we're going to try to vote tonight, that we'll discuss last, that's Dr. Taylor. She'll go ahead and begin discussing these in whatever order you want.
Okay, Dr. Cash, members of the board, I have before you several policies for our first reading this evening. Just to briefly go through these, policy 1310 is just some wording that addresses notification for parents about how assessments are used, and eliminates some regarding student performance standards with sports and extracurricular activities. Policy 3110 just includes a footnote adding the requirement for the instruction of cursive writing by the end of fifth grade, and the memorization of multiplication tables. And those are things we've already talked about addressing with our teachers at the third grade level. Policy 3110, innovation in curriculum, just requires that superintendents meet periodically with local industry and employers to talk about what are specific needs. We already have a process in place through our Career Academy and our advisory board, where we are working through and doing that. Policy 3405, students at risk of academic failure, has some minor wording changes, but you heard about the I-3 grant and the implementation of RTI in our district. And really, what we're doing with that process addresses everything that they are putting in place in policy 3405. Policy 3410 just adds requirements for secure testing administration for all state-required testing. That would include the NC final exams that we spoke of earlier this evening, too, and adds a stipulation that all final exams, and then of course, end-of-grade tests, if it's a year-long course, that they be administered during the last 10 days of the instructional year, and the last five days of the instructional year, if it's a semester-long course. Policy 3430 address school improvement planning processes, and just puts some language in there to encourage and ensure that the meeting times are convenient, and encourages parental participation in that school improvement planning process. And also requires that the school improvement plan can only be presented to you by the principal after a majority of the staff has voted on that. Those are policies we already had in place with our district. It also requires that any deliberations on the school's safety component, the school's safety plan be done during closed session, so that we are not revealing any of the stipulations for that plan publicly. Policy 3460, graduation requirements, adds some career endorsements, beginning with the graduating class of 2014-15. And this would be a nice endorsement, connects to our Career Academy process that we have in place, as well as the IBCC program that you approved as pursuing several months ago. Policy 3540 adds a requirement for the instruction on preventable risks for preterm birth and subsequent pregnancies to the health curriculum. And then policy 4700 addresses student records, and it just adds those industry credentials and endorsements on the high school diploma to releasable directory information. So that is a brief synopsis. You have the full board policies and all of the wording changes there. I would be glad to answer any questions. As you mentioned earlier, these will sit for another As you mentioned earlier, these will sit for another month before they require a vote.
It's my understanding from the Cal meeting that we would possibly entertain just the first reading on through Item T and then possibly vote.
I think that, that's for Dr. Hargraves. So all of these that I presented would just be for a first reading.
You're doing the first reading.
Have we, because it came up today at one of the meetings that we had, do we have any better information about, we do all this testing at the end of the year and end of the semester and end of the grades, and then we don't get them back forever? I mean, like, forever? Have they come back, have they come, for example, have they come back for the end of this past school year at this point?
We are expecting, those scores will be officially released on Thursday at 12 noon.
November the-
November the 7th. So we have, that's one of our topics that we've been discussing at Ed Matters. We've actually shared that information with our principals and provided them some information a couple of weeks ago at a meeting that they can use to share with their staff, their parents, their communities. We've also have communicated with Preston and the press as well.
But will it be that late every year, or is this just-
This is just a re-norming year. Subsequent years should be on the same timeframe that we've seen those in the past.
Further comments or questions for Dr. Taylor? Dr. Hargrave to present the last few of these policies.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, continuation from Dr. Taylor. You have the full policies, and so I'll just highlight some of the changes that will be taking place concerning these policies. Policy 7270, the school safety policy, requires us to provide a schematic drawing of our schools to law enforcement. Thanks to Mike James, Steve Hampton, and Rob Jackson, we have, we were already doing this prior to the policy being revised to ensure that our law enforcement, if they ever needed to have access to our buildings, already have the drawings in hand. Policy 7230 just requires a word change or adds a word, sexual violence as a type of harassment under the harassment and bullying policy. The student searches policy was basically just reorganized, and so we just decided to adopt that policy. And it just explains the parameters that must be in place before administration can search a student. And for schools administration, that is reasonable suspicion must be in place. The registered sex offender just clarifies those sex offenders that are banned from school campus. And that policy points us to General Statute Article 7A that goes into more details as to the types of crimes that allow people to be banned from our campuses. The last policy, Policy 5027, 7275, we discussed earlier tonight, as you, as I said earlier, the law now requires or allows for handguns for those persons that have a concealed weapons permit, to bring those on our school campuses, but they must be in a locked container inside of a locked vehicle, or in a locked container that is affixed to a vehicle. In order for us to be in compliance with the law, which went into effect on October the 1st, I am asking that we forego the 30-day wait period and asking for a vote on this particular policy tonight so that we can begin to educate our staff as to the technicalities of this particular policy and so that we don't end up with anybody inadvertently getting into any trouble.
Comments or questions for Dr. Hargrave?
I have a, just a general question under Q, Policy 1510, 4270-270 on school safety. Do we allow law enforcement to do walkthroughs on our campuses? And are those held during school hours, or are those done, like, on a weekend, or? You know, I mean, I know they have keys, but you know, like, in certain circumstances, I was at schools today, I wasn't sure where the buttons were, you know, they're located in different areas. And if you're in a hurry and you're trying to, you know, get inside the school as a law enforcement official, knowing where those entrances are and having firsthand knowledge of being there, seems like that would be crucial.
Yes, we have, first of all, great relationship with all of our law enforcement agencies throughout this county. And even with the Highway Patrol, they are now coming to the schools, to some of the schools and doing walkthroughs. So all of our law enforcement agencies are allowed to, and encouraged to come to schools and do walkthroughs. And they are familiar with where the keys are if they need to access the building. I won't divulge that information, but they're aware. So yes, we do allow them to do walkthroughs.
Just to add to that, Dr. Hargrave, in case they don't know it, we have a Knox box on the outside of our schools for the Fire Department's rescue squads and team, so they can get in without breaking our doors down. So all the schools do have the Knox box system in front, and the keys and diagrams are inside of those.
Further comments or questions? Mr. Chairman, I move we waive the first reading and adopt Policy 7275, the revision to the weapons and explosives. Second, Mr. Chairman. Motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Come to time in our meeting for public comment, we did not have anyone sign to speak tonight. I'd ask if anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us as a board. If not, we'll move on then to superintendent comments, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Several days ago, I was visiting East Elementary School, and as you know, that's one of our leader-in-me schools. And the kids out there have gotten deeply involved in the Covey's Seven Habits. And as I was visiting, I noticed in one classroom, a teacher had a note posted about one of the habits, and it was the habit of seek first to understand and then be understood. She had a quote to go with that, and it was from the author, Dr. Stephen Covey, and the quote was, "Most people listen to respond rather than to understand." And so I pondered on that today as we hosted our walk-in day here in Iredle County. Now, several months ago, when rumors started flying that teachers were going to walk out of their classrooms today, I never had any fear whatsoever that that would happen in our school system. I knew that our teachers were too professional and were too dedicated to their students to walk off their job. So why in the world did we even sponsor a walk-in day today if that was not a fear factor? I think the reason we did that is very, very simple, and it is that in North Carolina, it's really a shame that our teachers have gotten to the point that they would even discuss walking off their jobs. Teachers are at a point where they feel like that they have no voice and that no one is listening to them. So today, throughout our school system, we had lots of visitors, and I think the number's approximately 600? Okay, so 700-plus visitors today. From what we've heard, the visits today were eye-opening, and they were very, very positive. So maybe today did help us bridge that gap between seeking first to understand and then be understood. The message that we're trying to get out is that in North Carolina, we've now dropped to 48th out of the 50 states in public school funding. And I don't think that there's a North Carolinian that can raise their hand and honestly say, "I'm proud of that number." And I'm not sure that there's anybody that will say, "We set out on a mission to make that happen." But the grim reality is, it did happen. And we've got to find a way to sit down and listen to each other and communicate with each other. And if we're going to continue to reform education in North Carolina, then the teachers of this state should be at the table when those conversations are held. Who better knows the work that's being done out there every single day? And I think it will, it will only serve us well as we continue to try to find solutions to the issues that we face in public education if our educators are included in the process. So I'm marking today as a very successful day in our school system. I certainly learned a lot, and I saw a lot of people in schools that traditionally were not there. And I hope that this will continue. Some of the feedback that we're getting from our teachers is, "We should do this every year. We shouldn't call it a walk-in, just call it a community day." And they're very proud of the work that they're doing in the schools and the great things that are happening for kids and the opportunities that are being made available to them. So maybe this will become a tradition in our school system, and maybe today has begun a dialogue between all factions that if we are going to reform education, then let's do so collectively and get input from the people that are actually doing the work. And I will, I will ask you now, if any of you that did visit schools today have comments that you would like to share about our walk-in today?
I was in a total of 11 schools from way before 8 o'clock until about 2:30 this afternoon. I saw a tremendous, positive, but demoralized group of people. Our teachers are working just as hard as they can possibly work. I walked down halls where every, every teacher was in their classroom, they were teaching, students were engaged, they loved what they do, they're not in it because of the money, but they certainly do feel unappreciated. They feel that what they do is not valued. And so therefore, I think, you know, one principal looked at me about 2 o'clock this afternoon, and she just said, "Mr. Rogers, we just simply cannot ask our teachers to do any more than what they're doing. They're doing all that they can possibly do." So I think we have a school system that we are tremendously proud of. We are waging a battle against forces which is nothing more than an attempt to destroy public education as we know it. Public education has been the very fabric of the American society. Our successes as a country has been based on the fact that we give every individual a level playing field. And as a former retired teachers of 35 years, if you were at the committee of the whole this afternoon, I am very concerned and I am very angry at the way we have a legislature that is doing everything they possibly can to bury us. And we as citizens, not just this board and not just teachers, but citizens in general, have got to become politically proactive in making sure that some of this is either repealed or pulled back. I didn't think that as an individual who spent 35 years of my life, I would have ever seen public schools under attack. And I think something's got to be done.
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
I'd like to share just a few thoughts, and I'll make it brief. I know we've got several other topics to cover in closed session. I took a little different approach to today. Ms. Evans at North Iredle asked me to come to North today, and I did. And I said, instead of just doing a brief walkthrough, peeking in some classrooms and, you know, going with that approach, I said, "Ms. Evans, let me sit down with teachers during their planning period. Let's make a spot, let's give them a forum where they can come and talk to me about whatever they want to talk about." And it was, it was very eye-opening. Like Mr. Rogers said, the teachers were very respectful. There wasn't any pounding fist on the table or anything, but they are concerned, and rightfully so. They, believe it or not, and this was surprising, they didn't talk a whole lot about pay. And that's what I expected to hear, quite frankly. They talked about, like Mr. Rogers said, all the added responsibilities that they've been given with no extra pay. They don't mind doing what they're doing, they just can't take on anything else right now, and I respect that. I think there were probably 75 to 80 teachers that came in the media center throughout the day and sat down and talked with me, and it was, it was a very good experience.
I think the term we use now is teacher. I thought, I got to a lot of schools today, I got to eight, John beat me, he got 11. But Charles and I crossed our paths, and John, but I did see three of the commissioners, Steve Johnson, Marvin Norman, and Ken Robertson, had been to our schools, and Ken was at Statesville when I finished up there.
There were four, actually, four of the five.
I only saw three, I crossed paths with three of them, I didn't see the other two. But we found out, Charles and I did, that teacher is not a term that you can use anymore because the one we had at Troutman Elementary, she only, she was talking about mentoring, she's a teacher, but she's also a child in her classroom lost his mother, she's like a mom, and she's doing, the child has a hearing problem, so she's doing interpretation. So she handled, and Charles and I just looked, and we said, "How many things do you do as a teacher?" So not only a teacher, but she had like eight different other titles, and she has 28 children in her classroom. And so when that one child doesn't hear very well, what is she doing with the other 27? Because she only has a TA one day a week. So our teachers are going way above the realm of what they're asked to do. So I was very pleased to all of them and see them every day, a lot of them, too. So, and have teachers in my family, so they are doing a great job. And they're the backbone of our society right now.
And I was at, I think I hit four today, but I was just impressed with the, with the amount of plate spinning, I guess, you know, but there's only so much plate spinning that you can do in a certain amount of time, with a certain amount of resources, before some of those start to fall. I walked into one of the assistant principal's office, and I looked up at the board. She had one huge board with drivers, bus drivers, with teacher assistants, and our teacher assistants have been cut back. Most of those teacher assistants are getting up 4:45 in the morning, driving school buses, coming, working as a teacher assistant, and then they may or may not have to drive a bus that afternoon. I mean, that's, that's a pretty full day. And if one of those teacher assistants are out, who's going to drive the bus? I mean, it's down to the principal, you know, and the assistant principal having to drive the buses. I mean, you're, you know, it has a total ripple effect on some of the, some of the things. So it was, it was pretty eye-opening as far as that goes as well. And then the, you know, I heard, I heard many comments about the testing and, you know, some of the requirements that are done with that, if we could get a little more lenient on that, you know, but I'm not sure how we do that, but that was the big comment that I heard.
Thank you. Thank you all for the comments.
Mr. Johnson, did you want me to share the video for today?
Oh, if you've got it, yes.
I do, yep. In lieu of this month's teacher feature, we thought we would feature lots of teachers and lots of community members. So we were able to capture a number of the images from today. Again, we're currently, I think, at 707 visitors, and that's lots and lots of elected officials, at least five of you guys, four of our commissioners, Miles Atkins from Mooresville, folks from the town of Troutman, many of our city leaders here in Statesville. Lots of folks came out to support schools today and to learn more. We were also covered by at least, this is what I've managed to track down at this point, at least eight media outlets, including WBTV, WSOC, WCNC, News 14, our own record and landmark, the Mooresville Tribune, WSIC, and NPR. So it was a successful day, at least from a PR standpoint, and I think our teachers and our schools really appreciated many of them, the extra hands that they received. I know at East Elementary, we had people cleaning out fish tanks. We had breakfast provided at a number of our schools, and lots of information sessions, town halls type things. We had students kind of doing peaceful protests at some of our schools. It was, it was a really cool thing, and I think you'll see part of that reflected in this video.
this video. It was a fruitful day, and hopefully you were able to see by many of the pictures that it wasn't just parents who walked in today. We had lots and lots of support from our business leaders, community members. I know the Boys and Girls Club here in Statesville took a special interest in this project. United Way of Iredal County sent about twenty-four volunteers into our schools. You could see their Live United shirts, and they kind of spread out in some of our high need schools here in Statesville. So there were lots and lots of folks who helped make this day what I believe was a success. I know a few of our schools walked away with new partnerships, new volunteers that they hadn't had before, and I think that's a cool thing, anytime we can pull together and provide additional resources for schools. So I want to thank you guys personally, from me, and on behalf of the district for coming out today and for encouraging other people to do the same thing.
Thank you all.
That concludes our agenda for tonight's meeting. I mentioned some upcoming announcements, have November eleventh, next Monday will be the school holiday to celebrate Veterans Day. November twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth will be annual leave on the twenty-seventh, Thanksgiving holiday, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. But then our next Committee of the Whole meeting will be at ADR at 5:00 PM on December second, and then December ninth will be the Board of Education meeting back here at the Iredal County Government Center at 6:00 PM. I ask for a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel issue, student record, and property issues.
Before you enter that, can I just make two other comments?
Yes.
Also this week, Wednesday, the eleventh, Brawley Middle School's doing a veterans thing, as y'all know Veterans Day is next Monday, and this coming Friday at ten o'clock, West Iredal High School's having their annual Veterans Day ceremony, there'll be lunch afterwards, but West Iredal at ten o'clock and Brawley at eleven, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Bill? What were the issues again?
Personnel, student record, and property.
Mr. Chairman, according to North Carolina General Statute Number one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-eleven, I make a motion that the board enter in a closed session to consider to discuss a student record, a personnel issue, and acquisition of property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.